I guess mute is important. Good evening.
Good evening. How is everyone?
Great.
I have a very short list of complaints, very few.
Okay. Are we gonna take them alphabetically or?
Let's table them.
Can you guys hear me all right?
Yep.
Sure can. Okay. Hey Mike, I have you on the warrant committee. Are you good to read those two?
Oh, I'm absolutely. I've been practicing all day.
I was wondering why you were speeding down Forest Avenue.
Yes. Yes, that is. Oh. One thing though. And I'll bring it up anyway later on. I noticed. In one of the warrants, there was a bill from White Sporting Goods. Or a snow cap for the fences down there. Did you happen to notice that? The bill for the snow cap was six hundred and ten dollars, but the shipping, the freight was five hundred. It costs almost as much to bring it here as it costs for the actual snow cap. I think that's ridiculous.
It's a bit uneven, huh?
Yeah, I mean, it seems to me to be a relatively high to get. You know, six hundred dollars worth of product is going to cost you five hundred dollars to get it here by freight.
I tried to order a pot from Napa the other day that was thirty-five dollars switch and they wanted a hundred and eighteen dollars for shipping.
It's ridiculous.
Oh. Go all the way down.
I'd love to, but I think we should finish the meeting first.
I'll send my dog up for you, my puppy up for you.
Oh, my goodness.
Stop laughing, Jane.
By the way, before we get started, I've lost the water here at the airport. We may not get it back till spring. Not having much luck.
Lovely. You won't get it back till spring?
I found nobody at this point that will help me fix it. It's broken.
Metal piping?
Between here and the street, so.
Is it, is it the actual pipe is broken or it's just frozen?
No, it's, it's galvanized pipe and it's frozen and they can't use one of those little machines to go down and root it out because of the fittings. So anyway, I'll have more update on that tomorrow.
Okay, it needs to be deeper in the ground though.
Well, it's been here since nineteen forty something, never bothered.
Yeah, I addressed that with a new building, I guess.
Yep.
I'll be if I could, Jeff, but that sounds like a very complex situation.
All right, we're one, four thirty-one right now, so. We'll get started. Like to call this regular town council meeting to order if I get a roll call, please.
You may. Goli.
Here.
Bragden.
Here.
Danforth.
Here.
Mador.
Here.
McKeon.
Here.
Pelletier. Pelletier.
I'm still.
Prey.
Here.
Chairman Goli, we're not able to hear you. I see the pledge.
I was halfway through it already. Well, thank you very much for letting me know. Uh, thank you Diana, and if you could all join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic. One nation, God, and the people. Perfectly timed. And with that, I'll seek any adjustments to the agenda, Mr. Manager or Diana?
I'm not aware of any.
Nor am I.
I just had one item to bring up at the manager's report, so I'll get to it then. Uh, and with that, I'll seek approval to the minutes of the January twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-two regular meeting and January twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-two executive session.
So moved.
Motion by Counselor Mador, second by Counselor Pelletier. All those in favor, Counselor Prey?
Aye.
Counselor Danforth?
Aye.
Counselor McKeon?
Aye.
Fair Goli, bye. Counselor Mador?
Aye.
Counselor Bragden?
Aye.
Counselor Pelletier?
Aye.
That's a seven zero. Uh, with no special presentation, we'll go to the manager's report.
Thank you, Chairman Goli. I will first point out that the. Correct date for this report is. Tenth, not January twenty-seventh. That was an oversight. So I have submitted my report. I will go over some highlights. And I will, you know, certainly take any questions in the end. The. Bike pad safety project with the main Department of. Transportation is approaching the phase two step. This will begin later in the spring and there will be some engineering. Plans done over the summer and then, you know, fall goes well, we'll be, you know, looking for, for work. Later on, I believe. I believe that would start in twenty-four. Am I saying that correctly, Councilman Ford? So in that process, we, we. Just recently had a meeting with, with the Department of Transportation and TY Lynn, who did the phase one study of the needs there. So the next step in that process will be a community meeting. So I'm looking at options to host that community meeting, hopefully in a hybrid format. And to encourage some community engagement and insight to the suggestions and possible adaptations that would come of the overall work. We are looking at an order later on in the agenda that will. Um, allow us to enter into that agreement to move forward into the phase two and then eventually phase three, which is the actual construction of that work. In regard to the wastewater upgrade, we are very quickly approaching the final step in that process. You know, once we finish up a few paving items that, that are related to. The most recent stage. On the, the. Final part of that is basically the upgrade, upgrade of the main pump station, which is located in Little Italy. We were graciously awarded, or we are grateful to have been awarded one million dollars from the ARPA. Program, American Rescue Plan Act. Um, to go towards that and later on in the agenda, there is. Some more information on that and, and in order to bond for. The rest of that work, that will complete the entire upgrade of that system. And again, there are more details in the wastewater department supplement later on in the report. I'd like to. Mention the new town of Millenock at YouTube channel. That was, came from suggestion of community members and council members both. So each. Meeting that we have council and committee is being recorded and uploaded to the town of Millenock YouTube channel. You know, linked with the agenda and it gives community members the opportunity to log in at their convenience. You know, click links that will be located on our website and social media. And watch those meetings at any time that is convenient for them so that they can stay in the loop. And those meetings are more easily accessible for them in that recorded format. Uh, that is in collaboration with Design Lab, then they will be. You know, I created the account, Design Lab will be, you know, assisting in making those posts for our website and creating better access to them. I have included. Meeting dates for upcoming charter review. Sustainability Committee, Economic Development Committee and H Friendly Committee. And I do encourage members of our community to tune in and. Pay attention to those committee meetings. There is some very exciting work going on in each of them. I do want to give an overall reminder to members of our community that all these community, these committee meetings are, are open to the public. You know, we, we do encourage their participation. We encourage our input. You know, and, and if they're, if you are not able to attend these committee meetings or council meetings. Please. Take a look at the posted agendas and related information in the meeting packets and feel free to submit comment. Ahead of time, my email address is manager@millenock.org. You could also type or handwrite any statements, drop them off at the town office. We do appreciate the input of community members here in Millenock. YouTube links will be. Shared. And we, we, we really do encourage the participation. I will seek in this report. Due to a request at the previous meeting, an update on Zoom versus in-person for council meetings. We did decide to touch upon that each meeting until we, you know, for the foreseeable future. And we did include some information on the ARPA workshop series, which are, which is happening. On the off Thursdays of council meetings for the next two weeks. Or. Two sessions. Uh, within Public Works, I wanted to mention. That our Public Works Director has been receiving an increasing amount of phone calls due to. Neighborly disputes with snow removal. I wanted to remind folks. That. If Public Works or Code specifically, definitely Public Works is spending time out of their day with their small crew to address these issues. Uh, it takes away from their ability to maintain the roads themselves and make them safer and more drivable for, for our community members. It is against state law to plow across the road. It is against our ordinance to pile snow on neighboring properties. So I will hope that. Our community members take that advice wisely and clean up their snow on their own properties. That will save everybody a lot of time and effort. Fun fact included in the transfer site stemming from a question at our last meeting. E-waste at the transfer site is measured in weight, not units. So there was twenty thousand pounds of e-waste discarded, not. Twenty thousand individual televisions. So that clears that up for you, Counselor Prey. We did include the up-to-date statistics for the General Assistance Director and that program. So you can see more clear numbers on that. Within the Recreation Department, Director Jody Nelson has been. A key player in the planning of Winterfest and helping to staff some of that. Uh, that kicks off next Friday, the eighteenth. It's a multi-day winter-related event. It includes Katana Snow Down, which was. Spearheaded by Counselor Danforth and with some, you know, help from myself and others to make that day. Uh, a great event for, for community of all ages. That specific event takes place on February twentieth. See. Within the Tax Collector's Office, I wanted to make mention that. Though we have received a little over three hundred thousand dollars in. Tax payments, we are still. Looking to collect a little over five hundred thousand dollars. That is now past due. Uh, so we will be hoping for those payments and looking for those payments to continue coming in. We would certainly like to see them come in. At a faster pace. Also a reminder for dog licenses. Uh, within the assessor report, we did get some, some good news recently with the decision from the local Board of Assessment Review. Within the Brookfield case. That was found in favor of the town. Of course, Brookfield can. Feel that decision at the State Board of Property Tax Review within sixty days of that decision. And then, um, within the wastewater, we spoke about the upgrade. And if there's any further questions there, I, I know our wastewater superintendent, Mr. Sharet is, is logged in here and is very knowledgeable on that project. He can certainly chime in and answer any questions there. Firing ambulance, police reports attached. Um, I do understand that after the most recent select board meeting in East Millenock. I am fairly certain that completes their complement of officers. They are now fully staffed. Uh, so we will. See the more dedicated. The patrolman more dedicated to Millenock. Not more dedicated in comparison, but officers who are. Meant to be positioned here in Millenock. Uh, so we will see an increase in presence there. I will wrap up there. I will seek any questions and a straw poll on moving forward with in-person or virtual meetings.
Thank you very much, Mr. Manager. The two items that I. Wanted to bring up here, one, uh, we had an ARPA session recently. Uh, and it was suggested, one of the items that was suggested from that is that we have a section on the website where all of those items will be. There is now a section on the website under Government tab and specifically for ARPA. Right now I had the document that Counselor Prey had sent out. Uploaded, which basically gives a rundown on what those funds can be used for. So that is available to the public now. Um, that tab will be updated as we continue in those sessions. The other item, and this just came up yesterday, and I had a meeting today briefly. There's a Department of Energy grant that is looking to, uh, well, not the grant itself, but there's a group of people. From Northeastern University that have conducted studies here more recently with Arkatana and others. On, uh, the mill site development and related things. Uh, there's a new Department of Energy grant that that same team is interested in going after. That'll focus on more energy improvements in our region. Um, and they are seeking a letter of interest for the town, basically being interested in supporting that grant. The. Team will be the ones who actually administer and receive the funds and do the study for us and the region as a whole. So there is no commitment from us. We're simply, uh, we would simply be supporting applying for that grant. Uh, so I wanted to get a straw poll to see if everyone is okay with that. That's basically all there is to that. And certainly happy to answer any questions on that, too. Uh, with that, I will seek counsel comment. I see Counselor Bragden and Pelletier's hands up. I'll go with you, Counselor Bragden.
Counselor Pelletier's had a stand, had a stand up first, so I'll yield to him.
Well, thank you, Matt. Kind of you. Thank you, uh, thank you to the manager for continuing the comprehensive, uh, report that we're getting and. On a DOE. And also the staff, I guess, and we're in quite a bit of effort into these reports. On the DOE question, I certainly support that letter of interest and getting to the manager's report on the snow plowing issue with. I imagine some of this is happening not only because of homes having small lots, but some are having seasonal businesses and needed extra space for. Short-term rentals or, or. Snowmobilers or whatever. If that's the case, I would like to see that there's a way to hold those. Businesses that are putting snow where it doesn't belong, be accountable for it to be removed, you know, have them. Have it trucked out where they put it in the wrong place in the first place. Uh, yeah, I want to thank Ralph for clearing up the e-waste question. That makes more sense to me, I guess. When I saw units, I was thinking TVs, individual. And let's see. Yeah, that wasn't Counselor Prey, by the way.
Apologies.
Yeah. On the assessors report, uh, I guess a question I'd asked quite a few meetings ago that lost the transition of management here, but. I was looking for a, an update to the cost of having the revaluation done for real estate properties. In-house, we had one given to us earlier on and I'm sure it's changed by now. Uh, on the wastewater operation. I'm happy to see things moving along as well as they are and for the upcoming. Project, I'm wondering about the terms of this SRF loan, if you have any idea, you know. Kind of financing terms those are. And the length of the term.
Uh, Counselor Pelletier, I am very new to that project. Uh, I have had a quite a crash course recently. Um, I will yield to Mr. Sharet, uh, and if he is willing to, to expand on that for us.
Uh, yeah, uh, Jim Sharet, Superintendent Wastewater. What we're, as you could see, the amount that would be financed. Is going to be one point six seven million and. That is going to be financed through the, the Bond Bank, the main municipal bond bank, SRF loan type thing. Uh, like we've done in the past with some of our projects. As far as the terms. Uh, Louis, uh, it would be something that Mary Alice will be setting up as far as it's usually over a ten-year period anyway. I believe and, uh, but she can confirm that. I don't know if she's on or not, but. Uh, that's basically what I've got on it.
Yeah, it's basically what I was thinking about how long it would be. Uh, going on with the, uh, the sand bucket, uh, program that we have. I was wondering if the cat TV is advertising that on their station. That would be something a lot of the elderly can use for a public service notices. I'm having to. There we go. Oh, and on the police report, I was curious as to, they mentioned their problems with, uh. Limited admissions to the PCJ system for holding people that cannot post bond, post bail. Uh, I was curious if they're using, utilizing house arrests and, uh, electronic monitoring of these people, you know, keep them off the street. Where they should be held. And. That'll be it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Pelletier, and your thoughts on in-person or virtual?
Yeah, well, I'll defer to public safety on that, although I would like to see a. Broadcast expanded through cat TV, try to get them back online. It'd be nice if it could be a live broadcast, even if it costs us something.
Thank you, Counselor Pelletier. Uh, Counselor Bragden, you mind if I defer to the chief on that?
I was, I was gonna ask for his opinion anyway.
Chief Malcolm?
I. I feel that we should stay. As we are right now for at least two more weeks to see where the numbers, the numbers have started to move some. But let's make sure this isn't just a fluke and that things are going to start improving. I think, I think that we're getting to a period where maybe we'll be able to, to do something, but I would still like to be cautious. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Malcolm. Counselor Bragden?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, to start off, uh, for those who snowmobile, uh, the snowmobile bridge is out. Uh, very depressing news. I found that out yesterday. Uh, so if you're driving at night, just remember that that bridge is not there. Just try to, try to play it safe and get your directions before you head out. In-person meetings. I, I want to go back to in-person. I've had a lot of people tell me that they don't have access to Zoom and they've wanted to come to the meetings. And, and I think it's only fair that those individuals have a chance to come to, whether we go to a limited capacity. Like we first did and have six feet apart with masks. I do think that we should have some kind of availability for those that want to come in person. Um, so I definitely think that we should consider that as an option. Um, that's personally what I would want to go for is back in person at a limited capacity. Glad to hear about the YouTube page. I'm very stoked. Reached out to Peter as soon as he, uh, he said something. So I was very excited to hear about that. For the grant, for the DOE grant, I think that's great. And I think anything can help and I don't see how this would hurt any, so I'm definitely all for, uh, supporting that. Want to thank Public Works. They worked really hard, saw them out and about all, all the time during the storms and they did a great job. Uh, so thank you to everyone who was involved, um, for your dedication to the town and keeping it safe. Uh, the wastewater operation backing off, uh, Counselor Pelletier, glad to see that's starting to move forward. Um, we'd definitely like a little bit more information from Mary, Mary Alice as it gets, you know, as we continue forward. I'd like to know more about, uh. This SRF loan, um, new to that whole thing. So I'd be curious to see, uh, what information she can give us. Uh, want to applaud the East Millenock Police Department on the quick fix of the police cruiser. I saw that another one was down for a water pump issue. And they got quotes from multiple people and kept it local and, uh, really cheap. So I applaud them for that. And the cat TV situation that Counselor Pelletier brought up, um, I agree. I think that we've had a very. Lack of a presence and I think that we, uh, we should do live broadcasts. Like I said, I think all avenues. Like I said, I think all avenues to reach the public is, is the best way to, uh, to strengthen our relationship with the public and whether it be YouTube, uh, live broadcast or anything, just to get it out to the public is the best way to do it. So I, I agree with Louis on that, on that account. And that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Bragden. Any other council comment? Counselor Mador?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First off, could I ask the manager, uh, on the, uh, Community Initiative Director, uh, how many people do you have, uh, that have uh, shown interest or applied for that position now?
Uh, we had two applicants, uh, both seemingly very strong, uh, will be scheduling interviews early next week.
Okay. And I do like your approach, Mr. Manager, on the code enforcement officer posting that in-house first. Uh, I think that is a, a good initiative and I'd like to see on some of our other postings, uh, that type of thing continue, because I do think that we have some people probably in-house that would do a good job at that. So I, I applaud your, your approach of doing that first.
Thank you.
As far as the, uh, meetings are concerned, I propose that, you know, unless something serious comes up with, uh, our, uh, health officer, uh, that we start having, uh, in-person meetings, starting the first, uh, town council meeting in March. I think that gives plenty of time. Uh, I do believe that that would be a good opportunity for us to give the public plenty of notice that we start the first meeting in March to go in-person, whether it's just the council, uh, meeting in person or the council and the public. Uh, I, I think it's time. And I would prefer to do it then, so I'm all for in-person, uh, meetings again, and I would propose that it be done in the first meeting in March. As far as the snow plowing is concerned, I think that it's citations and fines are going to have to be done by the police department. It is in the code. It is in the rules. It is the state and it is the town charter. The police are going to have to start citing people for doing bad behavior. And I think you can make all the excuses you want as far as lot size or this or that or whatever. We go through this year after year after year and it doesn't improve. So the one thing that is a deterrent to bad behavior is fines. And I think we're going to have to encourage the police department now, uh, or people calling, not the Public Works, but calling the PD and getting, uh, citations done for snowplowers, people who plow or people who push in the neighbors' yards or whatever, or plow across the roads to be fined for their actions. I don't think we can go ahead and make excuses for bad behavior anymore. I want to go ahead and ask, it's come to my attention, we have meetings and if we are going to go back to public, you know, having public meetings, but we have things that we want to go ahead and still, uh, have people participate in, they can't come to public meetings. My thought is, uh, that my understanding, we have, the school department has, uh, smart boards that are no longer being used, that are simply being stored because they've gone and moved up to the next material. And I think some portable smart boards, one for the downstairs in the municipal building, uh, that could be used as a conference piece. And, uh, maybe one that could be, uh, wheeled into the upstairs in the council chambers for presentations and things. I, I can't see these things sitting in a closet somewhere collecting dust when there could be, uh, a, a use for them. And I think the town has, uh, on more than one occasion, I think we could probably have a couple of departments. Uh, the fire department with their training and things comes to mind. Uh, but I think other departments too could take advantage of, uh, some of these, uh, smart boards that are simply not being utilized. And I think, uh, Mr. Manager, if, uh, you could reach out to the school and see if possibly we could get a few of them to be used on the municipal side. I think that would be a, a, a big help uh, in having, uh, small meetings, uh, conference meetings, things like that, and help with council meetings. And that's just a thought, uh, moving forward on that. I, I'd like to see that happen. If you would be so kind. The, uh, the idea that, uh, the police department is, uh, filling up their positions while is good. Uh, their presence in town is getting stronger all the time. I am a little concerned at the amount of wear and tear on the vehicles. But since they're responsible now for the repairs and not us, I, I think that's all well and good. But I, I am a little concerned about the, the general wear and tear on the cruisers and taking them home and that uh, may be good for, um, a recruiting measure, but I'm wondering how much more those vehicles are going to be able to take having that be part of their, uh, operandi. Um, I think that's all I have. So I say thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor Mador, and, uh, letter of support for the Department of Energy grant?
Yes, absolutely. Thank you for reminding me. Uh, yes, I believe that would be, uh, very good and certainly a strong move forward.
Thank you, Counselor Mador. Any other council comment? Counselor Prey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, first, the last item that you just asked Counselor Mador on, I do favor a, a letter to the Office of Energy Efficiency at DOE, uh, to, uh, advocate and support that effort. Um, going through the manager's report, first in reference to the, uh, bike ped safety project and, and the discussion about, um, having a public hearing. The earlier we can get information out about that, um, I think would go a long way for any type of public meeting so that we don't have to, we're still going to have to explain it initially when we do that. But, uh, my conversations with a number of townspeople, they really have no concept of even what we had done last year. They knew, they know about what was out there, but they didn't understand what it was all about. So I, I would suggest maybe the manager could sit down with Ben or maybe the manager and Counselor Danforth could sit down with Ben and try to get an article out early before we start having any public discussion so that people come in with an idea of what it's all about. In reference to, uh, the, uh, calls and about snow plowing and, and some of the comments, uh, I believe the ordinance fines the homeowner, not the people who are plowing. Uh, we might want to look and direct, consider how we might want to address that or just leave it as it is, because I don't think most homeowners know they're the one that's responsible when they hire somebody to, if it's, that's what they're doing, hiring somebody to do it versus some of them are doing it themselves. Uh, still don't understand that there are ordinances as to what they're supposed to do with the snow that, that they, uh, take off from their property. And in reference to Public Works removing the snow, they're doing a heck of a job. It's kind of sad in a way that, uh, uh, we're so accustomed to them doing such a good job. Uh, we, a lot of times we just don't think twice about it. Uh, but, uh, those guys do a marvelous job out there in keeping the streets, uh, open. In reference to the, uh, report and reference to the, uh, unpaid taxes. Uh, that's really a million dollars, folks. That's 500, that, uh, 500,000 is a half year report. Uh, so it's a question, it's a question, uh, over time. Obviously, this is the collection of the second half, but if it continues, then we're basically missing a million bucks out of the year for whatever reason people aren't paying. But I also got to give compliments to the, uh, tax collector and the treasurer, uh, doing a great job in getting people notified, um, and getting people in to pay. Uh, I just think it's something we nearly, we need to keep an eye on, uh, going forward, because we went through this, these problems a couple of years ago. Um, and it took a bite out of us. Um, appreciate the extra effort that the staff has made. As you noticed in the report that, uh, uh, they were actually calling people on the phone, reminding them that, uh, that they had taxes due and, and it had a positive impact on getting a lot of them coming in. Um, so I do appreciate the work that, that they did. There was no necessity. I hope the town people understand that, uh, that the clerks in the office don't have to call them up and remind them that they owe it, they owe it. And, uh, that, that's just showing some extra effort to, uh, public relations by the town clerk's, uh, office, and I appreciate that. Remind everybody about the dog tags. Late fees are coming in here pretty soon. And, uh, obviously the assessor, great job on winning the case with, uh, Brookfield Power that our assessment was correct in the first place. Um, and appreciate the fact that the, uh, hearing, uh, came out in favor of, of Melanocque. Um, I think that's a, a big plus for us too, because that could have been, uh, a million and a half dollar loss if, with the subsequent cases of, uh, them challenging our assessment. I was wondering in reference to, and, um, in reference to the police cars, since it's a common problem, I would hope that they checked to see if that was a, uh, a factory default, uh, situation. If, if the water pump's gone on a couple of the vehicles, it seems like, uh, it might be. I had my vehicle in for recent maintenance and, and, uh, found out that I got some free service because there had been a recall on the vehicle on it and they brought it to my attention. I wouldn't have known it, known about it otherwise. That's it. Thank you very much. Oh, in reference to in-person, um, I'm willing to make a decision on the 24th. Uh, I had an occasion, uh, last week, uh, to meet with, uh, the president of the hospital and he told me about the situation at the hospital. They're still in, uh, dire straits up there. They're, they're very packed. There's not any room, extra room to, uh, handle some of the, uh, cases that are coming in. I think we need to follow the safety officer, the health officer, um, and, and call upon the hospital, see what the local situation is. We don't always hear what's happening up, up there, the pressure that's being put on them. Uh, so I'm looking for Tom's recommendation in two more weeks. I love in-person meetings. I wish the public would, uh, we could fill up the courtroom, the council chamber, um, with, uh, people wanting to participate and, and be involved in municipal government. Uh, but I think we need to follow the recommendations of those who we trust with the, uh, giving us the advice on what's the safest way to hold meetings. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Prey. Counselor Danforth?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I agree with what, uh, Counsel Prey just said about perhaps waiting until the next meeting to determine our, our, um, in-person status. And maybe the next meeting is time to have either Bob Peterson or Todd Phillips back, you know, to do a presentation as an update. Um, but I too am anxious to get back and in-person, but would, uh, look to the rec, look for the recommendations from our safety officer and hospital, um, on that. And the other, um, I do support the letter of interest for the Department of Energy, that project. So you got a yes from me on that. See, Counselor Prey, you just spoke about the, um, bike ped safety project and that knowing that we're going to have a community discussion on that. And I agree with you that I think we should get the word out, um, sooner the better. I, I don't think the meeting's going to happen until early April, but we can start. I can work with the manager and start talking about how to promote that. What you talked about happen, happening earlier in the year was actually the Bicycle Coalition of Maine. They did, did the demonstration project. They imagined people here. And you're right, we got a lot of community feedback on that. While that isn't, this particular study, it went hand in hand with, when that study was going on, as we were looking at like traffic patterns and the safety of Central Street Quarter and downtown. So, um, you're right, that, um, produced a lot of talk discussion, and I think it would be in our favor to go ahead and start opening up some of those conversations now, to get ready for that April community discussion, that public meeting we're going to have. So, so thank you for that. Um, and also thank you for the YouTube channel. You were fast making that happen. I've already gone back and reviewed a couple of the meetings, you know, um, has been helpful for the content of some of those meetings. Um, you know, in the public works around the consequences for, you know, the snow, uh, removal and that sort of thing. You know, Counsel Prey, you just mentioned, you said, according to code, it falls on the home, homeowner, not the snow plower sort of thing. So I think we need to get that sorted out and, um, some warnings need to happen. I know Counselor Mador, you know, yeah, there need to be consequences, but if we're going from a place of no consequences in the past to all of a sudden, you know, placing fines, I think perhaps we need to start with knocking on the door uh, and talking to the homeowners and do you know, this is your responsibility. You need to talk to your plow service, that sort of thing. So I think we need to, we need to curb that, curtail that, stop that. You're right. Um, so I guess we need to figure out, start with some communication, um, and then figure out the best solution for that. We talked about Rec Department, Winterfest is happening, and so also, um, mention was made of the Caton Snow Down. That was spearheaded through, our age-friendly, um, committee and, um, Chief Malcolm was very involved in that, the challenge we had last year. So this is year two of the Caton Snow Down and all our, and while, um, the other departments are involved in Winterfest, they're also involved in this. So the Rec Department and Public Works and our Fire Department are also going to be involved in that, um, February 20th, Snow Down event. So looking forward to that. Um, I think we've got enough snow for it. Hopefully we don't have anymore and they won't be diverted moving snow someplace else and that this, uh, skating rink will be free and clear for that, um, et cetera. So I did notice, um, maybe Diana, you can speak to that. Are there still really 240 unregistered dogs? I mean, how many dogs do we have in town? A lot of people, a lot of homeowners. That just seems like a lot to me. I'm just, is that a, is that a large number?
Well, you have to think that is not just, uh, that's multiple dogs in one household as well. So we had to start up 27 cages. I think each cage holds 20 dogs if I'm correct. So yeah, we still have 240 unregistered dogs.
Is that typical for this time of year? Because you said February 1st, the mandatory late fee. So February, we're in February.
That's right. Um, it, it differs every year, but it, it seems to be average.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. That, that list that goes to the ACO, um, I think was a little, uh, less in the prior years, but since COVID year, it's been, it's been gradually going back. Lori, um, the ACO really handled, uh, getting those when she was working in office to, to getting those registrations coming in more, but that is an average total.
So there's numerous reasons why perhaps people are late.
Um, I know a lot of people are complaining that they cannot get their, uh, animals, um, vaccinated and that's uh, rabies vaccinated. So that has been an issue on re-registering them because that is part of the protocol. So with the vets being a few months behind, um, it puts them behind on registering. So waiting last minute does really have a waterfall effect.
What is the late fee, Diana?
$25. So the, the, uh, a fixed animal is, um, $6 and unfixed is 11. So the registration fee is not high at all. It, it, the $25 mandatory late fee is, is what the customers are liking.
It'll be a rub there. I understand that. Yeah. Thank you for that information. Um, and I just, I guess I'll finish on the good news, you know, uh, as far as the assessment or the, the Brookfield case, that's, that's good for us, good for the town. So, um, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor Danforth. Counselor Pelletier, your hand is up?
Yes, uh, on the Brookfield issue, I thought I read that that was a local board of appeals that had, uh, upheld, uh, the assessor's decision there. Is it really the state that has, uh, upheld our, our decision?
That was
State Board of Appeals?
That was our, the local Board of Appeals. They, they had the opportunity to appeal that at the state level within
And they have what? And they have with past years and they probably will this year too.
One could assume that.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Council Pelletier. Any other counsel comment? Council McKeon?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, when it comes to meeting in person or Zoom, I'm also on the, under the um um, I guess um opinion of the health officer. We should definitely wait. Um, it could be a, even though we're in a dip, it could definitely rise again and um better being safe than sorry. When it comes to that letter of support, that's good as well. To any grant, we could always use extra funds. Kudos to the Public Works Department as well. Uh, we got a little bit of extra snow. I actually noticed a workers post on Facebook about having to go back out again, but it just goes to show, um, it wasn't in vain. It was to make sure we're all safe. So it's a it's, we're, we're very lucky to have the crew that we do have. Also for the report, thank you for the detailed report. Um, it's also good to see that appeal. I will see how that all works out. Um, otherwise, uh, the YouTube channel, another kudos to that. Already heard a lot of positive feedback from the community about having that extra resource. So uh, thank you. With that, um, that's all I got for the report. Thank you.
Thank you, Council McKeon. Uh, so with that, uh, I will assume that the majority of the council then uh would be in favor of waiting until we get closer to the next meeting date to make a decision on meeting in person. Uh, so that's the uh direction that I heard, Mr. Manager. I'm pretty excited about this bike pen safety project for a number of reasons and I'm glad to see that it's also in the agenda here. Um, a student reached out to me, uh, who's in the eighth grade Project Citizen uh group. And they actually want to take on uh bike safety and even creating bike paths as their project in town. Um, so I let them know about this and that they can certainly and should certainly participate in council meetings. Uh, where we will be discussing it or they can present uh their interests when time comes for public comment. Council Danforth, is that something that's also being held in committees, discussed in a committee or uh for now is that just at the council level?
So ask your question again.
Uh, everything relating to that bike ped safety project, is that something that's being discussed ongoing in any committee or is that just for now on the council level?
It's at the council level. We had a small work group. Um, it wasn't specific to the age-friendly group, but there was a small group, work group um that worked with the engineers or met with the engineers over time. So it hadn't, hadn't been pub- it hadn't been public other than that um council meeting that they sought public input. And now they're going to see, seek more public input before they finalize their report. So are you looking for a venue for the students to speak to? I'm just trying to see where you're going with your question.
I was gonna probably just connect the student with you so that they can be updated on when any of these public sessions are taking place, that they can participate in that and pre- present what they would like to recommend.
Yep, or even the manager, but certainly.
Sure.
Yeah.
Alrighty. Just a big thank you to Jim at Waste Water for all of your work there ongoing. Um, very glad to get that clarification on the e-waste. Um, I spent probably more time than I should have trying to rationalize twenty thousand TVs. Um, so that was a nice conclusion to that thought process. And also a big thank you to Public Works, as has been mentioned, for uh keeping up with the significant snowfall. Um, Mr. Manager, I'm extremely impressed with how quickly you respond uh to our and citizens uh inquiries. That YouTube channel came together very fast and that's been something that has been brought up for a long time prior to you being here. So I'm, I'm very impressed and appreciative that you prioritize that and um, it's already made a lot of our lives easier in terms of being able to share that meeting information with the public, uh specifically if there's questions or people that uh are just finding out about things to be able to direct them to these recordings so they can see it for themselves. So I just want to say thank you for that. As for the CID position, uh, one of the things that we discussed as a council was uh obviously having a list of goals for uh this position in terms of what they would be focusing on. Um, it would probably be helpful for the manager to have uh somewhat of a preliminary list for the interviews so that uh some of the questions might be able to be based off of that list. Uh, and also for the candidates to know what they might be stepping into. Um, so I'm gonna send a uh email out just requesting from everyone what we've already discussed uh publicly, just so we can combine, combine that all into one file. Um, and also any ongoing projects uh that this person might step into, um, that they might be managing or overseeing. Um, that would probably be helpful to the process. I agree with what's been said on the plowing. It's been an issue as long as I've been on the council and I don't know any other way, as Council Madore stated, but to offer fines for not complying with an ordinance. Other people are getting or had been getting letters in the mail for other ordinances that they hadn't been following and I don't see this as being any less of an issue than any of those other ones. Um, so I think something definitely needs to be done there. Mr. Manager, do you have the feel, has this come up with the police department yet? Their willingness or uh interest or lack of interest in uh fining the public for this?
Well, yes, Mr. Chairman, um, it has been brought up. Um, and though I have not had that conversation directly um with them, uh, it was brought to my attention that the response was uh that they don't, they do not enforce local ordinances in these towns. Um, however, my concern is that um, a great deal of these complaints come with plowing across the road, which is a violation of state law. Um, so that's something that we'll be uh digging further into in the very near future.
I appreciate that. Thank you. And if you can keep us updated on that.
With um some, some movement here towards uh dedicated code enforcement officer, we will be able to have some stronger teeth into that set of issues there.
Thank you. So overwhelmingly, uh, everyone was good with the Department of Energy letter of uh interest for that grant, so I'll make sure that that gets out. Um, and with that, just a thank you to all the town employees that uh clearly uh do a great job for our community. Um, and with that, I'll go to the public. If any public has any comments, I see Sandra Sullivan posted in chat, Public Works did a great job keeping the roads plowed these past few storms. They have been working long hours. Thank you. Uh, Chief Malcolm mentioned that he had to leave for a call. Uh, and Sandra Sullivan, um, how about putting an alert on the town page? That starting such and such a date, fines will be given out for non-compliance of snow plowing regulations. That's a pretty good uh suggestion. Uh, and kind of fits into what Council Prey was suggesting of letting the public know that it's an issue of the homeowner, not the person plowing. Um, so that should probably be reiterated as well. Does any council object to uh that message being put out first publicly? Okay. So, uh, Mr. Manager, if you wanna put out a statement, just that we're looking into doing that probably after you get confirmed, obviously with the police department that they will in fact impose those fines.
Happy to.
Council Prey?
Yeah, I, I think we, we need to make it understood by the residents that um this is coming in from Public Works uh in their efforts to do the plowing and whatnot, because that creates problems for them as well. And let's remember that uh this is being done because we find at the, in the spring of the year at the edge of the road and the sidewalks are all torn up uh by a lot of this plowing. And that's kind of why we've set a set of guidelines as to uh the property is supposed to be plowed up on their um own property. Um, they're not supposed to be crossing sidewalks and doing that. And if they're in a situation that, that they're limited, uh, then they've got to find another solution. I, I, I just think we need to, it's more than just, we're gonna find you. Uh, and as you said, I've been on longer than you have and it's been an issue before I came. It was an issue back in a decade ago. Counselor Madore and a few others that were, were around back then, uh including staff here, know this has been going on for decades.
Thank you, Council Prey. Any other counsel response to that? Council Madore?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, and yes, Charlie, you're absolutely right. It's been going on for probably well into probably the last, specifically the last dozen years or so. Uh, there was a time basically where there wasn't so many plow people. I mean, there, there was a few, uh now it's become, everybody else has got a neighbor or a friend or someone and and for some people it is their livelihood during the course of the winter to try to supplement income. However, we have gone ahead and we've taken ads out in the paper. We have, in previous years, we have gone ahead and put uh postings up. We have had discussions with previous town managers about this to uh move the issue ahead. Uh, and you can only do so much for so long. Every year it comes up and every year the same excuses get made. The same uh hand slapping gets done. And the problem never gets any better. Uh, talk to your public works director, see the people who uh they clear out an area and some uh Public Works does and a plow guy comes in and plows it right back out into the road again. Uh, it's, it's a perpetual thing and it's every year, it's not getting any better. It's not changing. And the only thing that will happen basically is uh if it happens to somebody's pocketbook. And people have to learn better behavior. We even had workshops where uh people who do this for a living were invited in. We had workshops and meetings to meet the public so that uh people who have people like Jeff Dagel and uh oh Ronnie Wheaton and a few others that have multiple customers came in and we discussed the issues and they're really not the problem. It's, it's the guy who is got three or four people or four or five people or he's doing it for a friend or whatever. And they end up being the problem or the homeowner himself. Who pushes it out into the road saying, the next time the plow goes by, they'll get it. Uh, it's I mean, how many, if it's been going on for more than a decade, how many more years are you going to let it go on before you start going ahead and enforcing the state laws, enforcing the local ordinances? And start finding people to try to go ahead, cause the, the uh handholding and the, you know, the oh, I saw what you did. It's, it's, it's over. It's time to call it good. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Council Madore. Uh, Council Braggden?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Kind of bouncing off what Counselor Madore said, I, I'm not impressed with the response that was given to the manager from East Malinocket. We hire them contractually to do service in our town and they're not agreeing to uphold our ordinances. I just, I don't fathom how that, when I was under the impression when we decided negotiated this contract, that our ordinances were also going to be upheld. I am, have no idea what is actually being upheld now other than the state laws. Um, and I think a discussion needs to be had with East Malinocket to find out what exactly is being followed. Because again, when we negotiated this contract, I was under the impression that our local ordinances were going to be enforced as well and I am not impressed by the response that was given to the manager. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Braggden. Council Pelletier?
Yes, uh, I, I can see the East Malinock Police Department's uh take on this of not enforcing local ordinances because those are almost unending. You know, if you look at our zoning or whatever, uh, they could be called in for a whole number of you know, noise or uh somebody's parking in my way or this or that. To the manager's point, that we're having a code enforcement officer, that I believe that's where this needs to be happening and to the point that Council Prey is trying to make of, trying to educate the homeowners. If people that are being offended could call in to the code enforcement and a letter or or a visit paid to the homeowner that's doing the offense, give them a warning the first time and then the second time, yeah, have the, because it is a state law. The state laws is not pertinent to all snow issues here. It's about getting into the public way. If they're putting it on their neighbor's lot, that's a local ordinance thing. And that could be handled by, you know, just to limit the amount that the East Malinock Police Department would have to handle. Maybe we just have them do the state laws because that is contractual with them. They have to do that one. But uh, the iffy ones, when we get a code enforcement officer, that would be uh the road to do. And then when the citation needs to be handed out for something other than breaking state law, have the code enforcement officer give them a citation. Just my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Pelletier. Mr. Manager?
Yes, thanks. Thank you, Chairman Golebe. Um, I just wanted to clarify that um, my, the response I received was not directly from um, the East Malinocket Police Department. It was secondhand. I just wanted to clarify that that was not direct from um Chief McDonough or any of the employees there. Uh, that was a response that was shared with me by both a community member and a member of our staff in response to those calls. Um, I do also think that Counselor Pelletier is on the right train of thought in the enforcement of local ordinances. The, you know, certainly the first step is the code enforcement officer, uh, while wearing both hats. It's not something I am able to keep up on. You know, entirely. Uh, so I am very hopeful that um, however this goes, hopefully we have somebody in that position very soon. Um, I feel very hopeful about that. Um, and very positive about that. Um, and I think that having that person dedicated to code enforcement will help sink some teeth into that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. And thank you, Sandra, for inspiring that conversation. Diana, your hand's up?
I, I do just want to interject, but they do take the oath, um, the same oath that you guys take. And it does state to uphold the ordinances of the town of Malinocket. I just wanted to state that. So if that's something that needs to be uh readdressed on the application of um giving them the oath, then that's something that we would have to look at as well.
Thank you, Diana. Uh, Council Braggden?
Again, I, I feel like there needs to be a discussion with, directly with East Malinocket Police Department. Um, you know, I, I get that there are some ordinances that we have that could be easily handled by a code enforcement officer. But there are some that should be handled by the police department. And if they're not saying that they're not going to do some of them, we need to know exactly what is being handled and what is not. I just want to get it straight on paper, because when a public, certain person of the public comes and asks me, I would like to have an answer for them. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Braggden. And uh, from the sounds of it, the manager will certainly be following up on that. Any other public comment? Sandra Sullivan agreed with Council Braggden. Any other public comment? And seeing none, we will move into unfinished And seeing none, we will move into unfinished business. Council Prey, if I could have you read order number eleven twenty twenty-two, which is revised, please?
Order number eleven dash twenty twenty-two revised, providing for approval to revise FY twenty-two school special dedicated revenue clearing account. Whereas order one eighty-one dash twenty twenty-one approved an estimated fiscal year twenty-two school special dedicated revenue or clearing account budget of one million five hundred and seventy thousand. And whereas the current such budget is estimated to be three million five hundred and ninety-one thousand and one hundred and fifty-nine dollars. It is ordered that Millinocket Town Council approve the revised special dedicated revenue budget of three million five hundred ninety-one thousand, one hundred and fifty-nine dollars. With the condition that any budget line overruns will be repaid to the town from the school budget or from their fund balance. And it is therefore ordered that one million five hundred thousand is transferred from the unassigned fund balance to fund the additional cash flow requirement.
Second.
Motion by Council Prey, second by Council McEwen. Mr. Manager, do you want to give us a brief update here of the revision and the plan?
Sure. The school department files for these reimbursements monthly. They gather invoices and submit that monthly. There is a, there is a delay in receiving those funds. And I would have to refer to some notes on my computer in my office to remember exactly how long that is. And I can certainly update that. But they they are guaranteed reimbursements. The application process is extremely detailed. And everything that they purchase along with like, as it is stated in their grant application, is guaranteed for reimbursement. So there's no risk there, to my knowledge. I have discussed this with the school staff, with Mary Alice, our treasurer, and with Mr. Bopain. And we we may very well be looking into line of credit actually to handle some of this as not to affect our aside and fund balance in such a way. I hope that answers your question.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Council Prey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Peter, do you know what our balance will be in the in the dedicated revenue of the unfunded, from the unassigned fund balance fund?
Can you state that?
Well, we're taking, we're taking one point five million transferred from the unassigned fund balance to fund the additional cash flow requirement for the school. What does that leave us on hand?
Roughly three million, I believe.
You're saying we have four and a half million in there right now. Okay. The the only issue that I have, and I'm going to support this order. I'm not necessarily sure that if if money is misspent, it isn't approved in advance. The the school spends the money and then it files for a refund out of the monies that's that's in the pot of money that's available through the feds. If it is misappropri, if there's a misappropriation, it's the town that is responsible. When we sit there and say that we're going to take anything out of the school budget, it, the the school budget is all town tax dollars. So if we take it out, we still need to put it back in to run the school system the following year. So it's not really the school budget that the money comes out of. It comes out of us assessing a tax to pay for this. I think that we have a good administration over there, and I think that they'll do a good job on, I just, there is a slight risk. That's all I'm mentioning, I'm saying. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I, do you mind if I jump in there briefly? I checked my, I just checked my records. It would actually leave us just under two million in the unassigned fund balance. Also, the 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 grant application that the school submits is extremely detailed on exactly what they're going to spend on, and it is approved in in that same amount of detail. As long as they spend it on exactly what they say they're going to spend it on. You know, it will be reimbursed. And I, you know, maybe we can invite Dr. McNaughton, our superintendent, add an upcoming upcoming meeting to explain that process a little more detail, but I, unless they go completely off the walls and start spending on things they, you know, did not mention they were going to spend on, they'll be reimbursed for that.
I'm not in a disagreement with that totally, but in in you referenced it, that you're considering going to a line of credit. That will require council action as well.
That's correct.
Just just mentioning it. Yep. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Prey. Council Mador, your hand was up earlier?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman. I'm not going to support this. I think it's too big a hit on the unassigned fund balance at a time in where we may need the money for operating expenses. We already just have seen that through the report that a half, we're down a half million right now unpaid in taxes as it is. This is a, this is a great deal of money. And yeah, we capped the fund, we capped the unassigned fund balance at three million dollars each year for a reason. It gives the town operating money to to get us through the the soft spots of keeping the town afloat and keeping the lights on during such times as we don't have tax money coming in. So it's just, I I'm not opposed to the line of credit idea, but doesn't really have it in this order. And so until it does, I can't support the order as written. With that, I'll say thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Manager, please.
All of these funds will not be spent at the same time. This is a, this is spending over the course of years. And, you know, the reimbursement will be coming along, you know, all at the same time. Once the cycle has started, it would take a few months for that to catch up. But we're not talking about allowing the school to spend three million dollars in one fell swoop. You know, we, we're certainly aware of the, you know, the the reason for the unassigned fund balance to to carry us through the summer until that first round of tax payments starts coming through. This is more of a, more of a trickle than a one fell swoop type of spending pattern. So I, you know, I don't see that as being as much of a concern, just speaking towards your your concerns, Council Mador, and I certainly respect that. But I wanted to add, I wanted to add some additional clarity to that.
But it's still, fairness, Mr. Manager, it it's still asking us to to dedicate an additional one point five million plus at a time when I I understand the whole three million isn't going to be spent all at the same time. But the idea of taking that kind of money away from the the unassigned fund balance, it it's just not, to me, it's not good accounting. And it's certainly not what the town plans for to make sure that we have the operating capital necessary to get us over some of the humps that we need. Like I say, a line of credit that could be taken care of periodically as it's spent or as reimbursements come in, that may be the answer to it. But again, I can't support the order without that that language in it. So again, I I appreciate your 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 thoughts on it, but I I still won't be able to support it as it's as is being brought in front of us right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Mador. Council Pelletier?
Yes. I I take Counselor Mador's, you know, comments a heart. I can understand where he's coming from, given we'll be lowering our unassigned balance. You know, two million or less at a time when we're coming into a budget season that we're going to be adding positions to the municipal side. But having said that, and correct me if I'm wrong, but these reimbursements will be coming back to the unassigned fund as they come in. And to the point that the manager has made, they're not, you know, we're transferring this money for them to go ahead and order and buy materials and pay for programs that is going through the school year. Obviously, there'll be a break in the summertime unless it's some capital project that they're putting it into. I I think it's for the expense of going with a line of credit, I have to disagree with that because, you know, ultimately, we end up bearing that cost. The taxpayer will, one way or the other. So I I think we will be all right going this route and that the school will be prompt in submitting their reimbursement spending and that their assigned fund will gradually grow back over the year. So I'll be voting for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Pelletier. Any other council comment? Council Braggden?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Carrying both sides to the table, I I'm kind of in the same boat as Louis. I I'm very cautious about this. It's a lot of money. And as been stated, we're getting ready to go into a budget season that we're adding positions into, and I'm very hesitant to vote in favor of this. I I wish it could be rewritten somehow to be better, but I really don't see any other way. I I agree with Louis. It it's going to be coming back in as time goes on. So I I think I'm okay with with that portion of it. I just, it's a very large amount of money. But I will be voting in favor. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Braggden. Mr. Manager, I know last time we've tabled this a couple of times. And I think the first time it came up, I asked Mary Alice if this was a time sensitive thing, and clearly we've gone some time without having passed it. Do you know probably at the latest that we need to make a decision here?
My short answer is no. The when we first brought this to the attention of the council for amendment to the previous order, the school department was roughly two to three hundred thousand dollars away from that one point five million dollar limit. When we met with the school superintendent and bookkeeper week week before last, they didn't seem to think that they were going to meet that threshold anytime in the very near future. That being said, I don't have an exact date on when they would meet the threshold of the one point five seven million.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. And that was, that was also my impression from when I asked that to Mary Alice. I asked that because to Council Mador's point, this is a significant portion, almost half of our unassigned fund balance. And I don't really disagree with this overall process here. But if anyone's paying close attention to the economy, we are in a very scary place right now. The costs continue to rise and and there are so many factors that could contribute to the very near or medium term future for our country and for our town. If there were any need for us to have a significant amount of funds to cover any unexpected costs, I would be very concerned about having about half of our unassigned fund balance moved out of the account. If if we don't have a significant amount of time or a short amount of time that we have to do this, I would really suggest that we see from Mary Alice what a line of credit would look like, what that cost would be. And also suggest that any additional expense, if there's interest fees associated with that, I would request that that would be paid for from the school's account. Yes, ultimately, it goes to the public in general anyway, as Council Pelletier pointed out. But to me, that's kind of an insurance policy to make sure that we are maintaining our funds and maintaining some level of security. And I think it's worth it depending on what the interest rate will be and what that cost will be. So I I would appreciate if this could be tabled. I'm not going to motion that because I want the full council to have more discussion and maybe some input from the public. But those are my thoughts. We're not really, in my opinion, needing to pass this tonight. And I think we should just get a little bit more information. Council Pelletier, your hand is up?
Yes, along the lines of you're looking for clarification. The manager's pointed out that they're pushing up against having spent the one point five million that they've already got. So my question would be, how much of that one five million have they already submitted for reimbursement? How long ago was it done? Are there any money coming in from the reimbursement? And how, what is that time that, you know, what's the history of the time of being reimbursed? And can we get some comfort in the fact that maybe it's only three months or four months, not six months to a year? Kind of a thing. So those are the kind of questions that I would have him really get the superintendent in here to answer for us. If, you know, if it's not time sensitive, then it needs to be passed right off. But I, you know, I have faith in the school department and being able to do their thing. We just have to be concerned with cash flow. And we, you know, you pointed out, this is a big hit on our unassigned balance.
Thank you, Council Pelletier. Council Braggden, then Danforth?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Bouncing off what you had said, I'd be interested in the manager's proposition of having Mary Alice and the superintendent come in. That way we can ask the questions all at once instead of having discussions like we are now, where we're just asking a bunch of questions that are going unanswered. I I agree with the tabling. I think we should have the superintendent Mary Alice here so we can ask these questions and get them answered before we make a a permanent decision like that. But I I like the idea of tabling again, if we can get those people to come in. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Braggden. Council Danforth?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was just, I sort of had clarifying sort of questions or comments along the lines of Counselor Pelletier wondering how long it takes for the reimbursements to come in. And from what I understand, you know, they've received this grant, but they have to pay upfront and then get reimbursed. And so they need the town, they need our help to be able to do that, to be able to actually execute the grant and the monies that they have been allocated. So I'm certainly all in favor of working with the school system to make sure that they can, you know, realize everything that they can get from this grant because it's going to support the school system. So I'm wondering, is it, does it have to be one point five million? Can it be a lesser amount? You know, I guess those are some of the questions on, you know, their spending pattern, when they want to spend it and how quickly they get reimbursed. So that, so that, right, that our our fund balance doesn't go below, much below three million. I know that's sort of like a threshold that we've been told to have a healthy three million, I think, sitting there. And if we go below that, that is a concern. So perhaps your suggestion to be that have this tabled again, and what Counsel Braggden just said, have both of these entities that that are at our meeting now, Superintendent and Mary Alice, join us for a meeting might be the best solution or best next step. But certainly I want to know, I support assisting the the school in this way by providing them the funds. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Danforth. Mr. Manager, you unmuted yourself. Yep.
I'm happy to arrange that. I tried to get an answer from the superintendent, right? now live, but he happens to be on the road and doesn't have the documents right in front of him. Um, the, the way I believe this is happening is that it should be happening um, on a monthly basis, um, the, the out and the in, uh, with that account. Um, I know that the way this is worded on the order, um, it appears that that would be coming out in, in one large chunk, um, so that that would be concerning to me as well, uh, with a large chunk at one time. Um, do you think it should be happening on a monthly basis as, um, as the expenses are occurring and being reimbursed? But I'm happy to arrange for Dr. McNaughton and, and Ms. Collins to, uh, join us for a meeting, uh, to clarify that. My concern would be that within um, my concern would be how close they are to that threshold at they, where they stand now. Um, you know, and I wonder if there could be an amendment, um, uh, you know, to bump that up to any level for the time being. Um, I'm not positive on the process there. Just in case they were to reach that in the next two weeks, I wouldn't want to put them in that position.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Uh, on the, on that first note, I would suggest, uh, all the councillors and the public uh, submit any questions that they would want to be addressed at the next meeting and send that to our manager. That way we can hopefully just get this all resolved and addressed and not have a repeat of needing to table it again. Um, so for all of you, if this does get tabled, please, uh, do think thoughtfully about what questions you might have and submit them to the manager so that we can get it all addressed at the next meeting, if that's how we end up going. Uh, Councillor Mador?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. On the last point the manager made, if there was such a time that there was a financial emergency for the school, obviously the council could have an emergency meeting and, uh, an order drawn up and monies appropriated to help the school over the hump at that time. Uh, it, it doesn't have to be anything that has to be, um, taken up i- i- at this point, I don't believe. But certainly if it became a financial strain or a financial, uh, uh, emergency, the council could go ahead and have an emergency meeting where this order could be taken up and monies then could be, uh, funneled to the school to help them. Saying that,
Thank you, Councillor.
Yeah, I would, Mr. Chairman, if I could, I would like to, uh, make an, uh, motion that we table order eleven dash twenty twenty-two, uh,
Can do it.
For the next meeting.
Have a second.
Uh, Charlie said we can't do it.
Well, he was debating it. He can't, he can't debate it and then make a motion to table.
I move that we table order eleven dash twenty twenty-two to the next council meeting.
Second.
Okay.
It's an inappropriate motion. Based on the rules, you cannot be debating a subject and then make a motion to table it while you've been talking about it.
Motion by Councillor Mador, second by Councillor Bragdon. All those in favor, Councillor Danforth?
No.
Councillor McEwan?
Nay.
Councillor Prey?
Nay.
Councillor Mador?
Aye.
Councillor Bragdon?
Aye.
Councillor Pelletier?
Nay.
And Chair Golubai, the, uh, motion fails. Any other discussion of the council?
Yes.
Councillor Pelletier, your hand's up?
Yes, uh, taking the manager's point to heart, I don't see any reason why we cannot amend this order to give them a couple hundred of thousand dollars right now, which would certainly carry them to our next meeting when we have them to really, you know, answer our questions.
Thank you, Councillor Pelletier. Any other counsel comment?
Can I make a follow-up question?
Please.
Mr. Manager, um, approximately how much money do you think would be enough to get them by for two weeks? A, a realistic number?
Fifty thousand dollars.
Mr. Chairman?
Councillor Bragdon?
I motion that we amend order number eleven dash twenty twenty-two revised, uh, to read that we, uh, it is therefore ordered that fifty thousand dollars is transferred from the unassigned fund balance to the fund to, uh, to fund the additional cash flow requirements instead of one point five million.
Second.
Motion by Councillor Bragdon, second by Councillor Pelletier. Discussion of the council, Councillor Prey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, you know, I, I, I have a little bit of difficulty thinking that we're kind of just throwing money around here on something we don't know anything about. We should have the superintendent in, as Councillor Mador pointed out, if we, we could meet, uh, over the weekend, we can meet beginning of next week, if there's a necessity to appropriate money immediately. But until then, let's just have a better understanding of the whole thing. Uh, I, I mean, you're, you're talking like giving them five percent of what they say they need, thinking that that will carry them over because that's what they need immediately. We don't know. It's a guesstimate. Let's act on facts of what we know. And, and, uh, I, I have no problem in reference to, to, uh, tabling this to a later point. My previous point was just, you can't talk about it. And then I now move it, we table it. Uh, Councillor Pelletier had his hand up, uh, and I don't know if others maybe had wanted to say something in that. So I think we got to have the full discussion first. Uh, but, uh, I'm not going to support an amendment to start uh, to take a guesstimate as to what they need. I'd rather have the facts and make the final decision on it. And I'm here over the weekend. I'm here next week. If you need me, I'll be there at a special meeting.
Thank you, Councillor Prey. Councillor Bragdon?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Considering our manager's previous role as, um, on the school board, I think he has well enough knowledge to understand how much money is going to be needed for two weeks. Um, I don't mind giving them that amount of money. I just, you know, I, I agree, we need more information. And if two weeks is enough, that's perfect. We don't even know what the schedule of the superintendent is. If he says he can't meet next week, then this is all for naught. I, I just don't see a purpose of doing that. Um, if we give them fifty thousand dollars, that will get them by for two weeks according to what our manager has told us, um, that will give time for the superintendent and for Mary Alice to make, uh, to make some time to be here with us at our next meeting. I, I think fifty thousand dollars is, is, is more than enough. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Bragdon. Any other counsel comment? Councillor Danforth?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I, I guess I feel the same way as Councillor Bragdon. And I know we've tabled this, uh, we did table it before, and then we've had legal counsel and our treasurer has, you know, come back, um, has been working on this. So, um, I'm comfortable with the fifty K, um, and would support this.
Thank you, Councillor Danforth. Any other counsel comment? Seeing none, that of the public? Well, I guess we had a lot more to say than the public did on this one. Back to the council, all those in favor of the motion to amend, uh, Councillor Pelletier?
Aye.
Councillor Bragdon?
Aye.
Councillor Mador?
Nay.
Councillor McEwan?
Aye.
Councillor Danforth?
Aye.
Councillor Prey?
Councillor Prey, Prey, you are muted.
Councillor Prey?
Nay.
Thank you. And Chair Golubai, the, uh, motion passes five-two. And now back to the order as amended. Any further counsel comment? Seeing none, that of the public? Also seeing none, back to the council, all those in favor of order number eleven twenty twenty-two revised and as amended, uh, Councillor Prey?
Nay.
Councillor Danforth?
Aye.
Councillor McEwan?
Aye.
Chair Golubai, Councillor Mador?
Nay.
Councillor Bragdon?
Aye.
Councillor Pelletier?
Aye.
The amended order passes five-two. Uh, moving us on to new business, Councillor Mador, can I have you read order number nineteen twenty twenty-two, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Order number nineteen dash twenty twenty-two, providing for execution of the warrant for February tenth, twenty twenty-two. It is ordered the town warrant for February tenth, twenty twenty-two in the amount of eighty thousand four hundred and seventy-eight dollars and seven cents is hereby approved.
Second.
Motion by Councillor Mador, second by Councillor Danforth. Heavy hitters?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, eleven thousand, seven hundred and fifteen dollars and thirty-three cents to Dead River. Uh, one thousand, six hundred and thirty dollars and thirty-six cents to Howard P. Fairfield LLC. Uh, fourteen hundred and ninety-three dollars and fifty-five cents to Hoyle Tandern Associates for the master plan. Uh, four thousand, forty-seven dollars to Maine Municipal Association, which is our membership. Uh, thirty-four thousand, four hundred and ten dollars and twenty-nine cents to Maine Water. Four thousand, two hundred and fifty-six dollars and sixty-seven cents to New England Salt. That was order that was placed, we received in January, Street Carriers through. Uh, two thousand, thirty-one dollars, that is to PDQ Doors for a, uh, repair at the Public Works Garage. Uh, four thousand, two hundred and twenty-eight dollars and sixty-five cents to Preble Oil. Uh, two thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars to S.A. McLean Incorporated. Fourteen hundred and four dollars and sixty-six cents to Versa Power and eleven hundred and ten dollars, uh, to White Sporting Goods. Uh, and I'll talk a little bit more on that as we go, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councillor Mador. Any other counsel comment? Seeing none, that of the public? Also seeing none, back to the council, all those in favor, Councillor Pelletier? Oh, Councillor Mador?
Yeah, I just want to point out one thing real quick, and, and it's very, I think it's important for councillors to go ahead and look at your warrants and, uh, especially down at the town office and examine them if you're on the warrant committee. Uh, that White Sporting Goods, that was a six hundred and ten dollar order and they charged us five hundred dollars for freight to get it here. So it costs us nearly as much for the freight to, to deliver it as it was for the order to get it. So you, you need to check that. That is, I think, uh, even in the times we have right now, an exorbitant amount of freight, uh, charging freight to get that to Millinocket. And with that, I say thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councillor Mador. Councillor Prey?
Uh, thank you. Um, when you see something like that, I guess, or did you ask the manager or did you ask, uh, inquire as to what the necessity of having it that, that I would assume that might have been like overnight, uh, air mail or something, um?
No, that was, that was standard freight and it was, uh, snow cap for the recreational, uh, for the fencing, for the recreational field. And, uh, no, I didn't have a chance to discuss it with the manager because, uh, at the time I was in there to do the warranty, wasn't available.
Okay. Now, but the, the, the business is in the, in the Bangar area, right? The white sporting?
Yes.
I mean, it would have been cheaper to send somebody down to pick it up or unless it was the cost of them getting it shipped to them. But, uh, I would, I would hope that in the future we, uh, those things would be, uh, included in any consideration of where we're purchasing goods.
I agree.
Thank you, Councillor Prey. Mr. Manager?
I just wanted to um, add the, I don't know if this would have been an easy thing to go down and just pick up. Uh, we're talking about the, um, the rounded yellow, uh, that's roughly this size and, and it stretches the entire length of the fence around, um, the ball field down, down there. I, I don't believe it would have been as easy as picking it up in a, uh, you know, in, in my pickup and, and driving back to Millinocket. I, I, you know, I understand that, that, you know, the concern is that this shipping was almost as much as the item itself. Um, and, you know, I, I just wanted to clarify that it wouldn't be as, as easy as just running down and picking it up.
No.
Very.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Um, and on this note, uh, Diana, do you know if we had enough signatures in person today? I know when I went in that it made the third signature on the warrant. Are you aware, or Mr. Manager, either of you aware of if there's any signatures needed still?
I was in today and I didn't see them. They, I went in for that purpose and, uh, nobody was in the office when I got there. They were around, um, and then I got a call, so I left, but I didn't see them sitting out for signatures, so I assumed that they had it.
So when I was there, it was about at two, well, it's much more than two hours ago now. It was around, uh, one o'clock or one-thirty. So, um, if any councillor could go down tomorrow just to ensure that it's all signed, we just need one more.
I plan on stopping down tomorrow anyway. I'll, I'll stop in.
Thank you, Councillor Bragdon.
I can too.
And, uh, thank you, Councillor Prey. With that, I will, uh, get to the vote. Um, all those in favor, Councillor Pelletier?
Aye.
Councillor Bragdon?
Aye.
Councillor Mador?
Aye.
Chair Golubai, Councillor McEwan?
Aye.
Councillor Danforth?
Aye.
And Councillor Prey?
Aye.
Order passed seven-zero. And, uh, right back to you, Councillor Mador, if I could have you read order number twenty twenty-two, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Order twenty-two dash twenty twenty-two, providing for the execution of a wastewater warrant for February tenth, twenty twenty-two. It is ordered the wastewater warrant for February tenth, twenty twenty-two in the amount of six thousand, four hundred and ninety-one dollars and thirty-three cents is hereby approved.
Second.
Motion by Councillor Mador, second by Councillor Danforth. Heavy hitters?
Not really. We had one for over two thousand, but that was to the town of Millinocket, so everything else is fine.
Thank you, Councillor Mador. Any other counsel comment? Seeing none, that of the public? Also seeing none. All those in favor, Councillor Prey?
Aye.
Councillor Danforth?
Aye.
Councillor McEwan?
Aye.
Chair Golubai, Councillor Mador?
Aye.
Councillor Bragdon?
Aye.
Councillor Pelletier?
Aye.
And the order passes seven-zero. And Councillor Pelletier, if I could have you read order number twenty-one twenty twenty-two, please?
Certainly. Order number twenty-one dash twenty twenty-two, providing for wastewater infrastructure grant, AARPA. It is ordered that the Millinocket Town Council accept one million dollar grant from the American Rescue Plan Act of twenty twenty-one towards a two point six six five million wastewater main pump station upgrade project and that the town manager can sign the necessary paperwork. It is further ordered that the one million, six hundred and sixty-five thousand uh, bond is obtained from the Maine Municipal Bond Bank to pay for the rest of the project.
Second.
Motion by Councillor Pelletier, second by Councillor Mador. Discussion of the council? Seeing none, that of the public? Also seeing none, back to the council, all those in favor, Councillor Pelletier?
Aye.
Councillor Bragdon?
Aye.
Councillor Mador?
Aye.
Chair Golubai, Councillor McEwan?
Aye.
Councillor Danforth?
Aye.
And Councillor Prey?
Aye.
Order passes seven-zero. And Councillor Danforth, if I could have you read order number twenty-two dash twenty twenty-two, a little bit of a tongue twister there?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Order number twenty-two dash twenty twenty-two, providing for authorization to enter agreement with Maine DOT. It is ordered that the town manager is authorized to execute agreements and work related to the attached agreement regarding the bike agreement regarding the bike ped safety improvements with the main DOT and authorizes the town treasurer to accept any funds on behalf of the town to be applied to the town's match as stated in the agreement.
Second.
Motion by Councilor Danforth, second by Councilor Mador. Discussion of the council? And seeing none, that of the public? Also seeing none, back to the council, all those in favor, Councilor Pelletier?
Aye.
Councilor Bragg?
Aye.
Councilor Mador?
Aye.
Chair Golub, aye. Councilor McEwen?
Aye.
Councilor Danforth?
Aye.
And Councilor Prey?
Aye.
Order passes 7-0. And that takes us to reports in communications, uh, warrant committee for the February 24th, 2022. Council meeting will be Councilor McEwen and Pelletier, if you're both able to do that.
Aye.
Thank you very much. And, uh, any chair committee reports?
Miss?
Yeah, I, um, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm just going to re, not reiterate, remind people that there's an age-friendly Millinocket meeting, um, next Tuesday, the 15th, at 4:00 PM. Um, and the Zoom link and agenda has been posted to the website. And, uh, Mr. Manager, you would have received the MOU for that M-dash project, the Municipal Data Across Sectors for Health that we got from the Maine Council on Aging. There was an MOU, um, for you to sign and send back, and we have already had an order, I believe, for you to sign that, so. But that particular meeting, um, will have folks, um, from that project will sort of do an onboarding with the, um, age-friendly committee. So welcome any and all that want to attend. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Danforth. Councilor Bragg?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the events committee, um, there were, the, the cancellation for last, uh, I, I was in the hospital, I had an accident. Um, and wasn't able to, to attend, and several other members also couldn't attend, so it, it would have been a very small meeting anyway. I am currently rewriting the agenda as we speak, and the plan is to, um, re-meet this Monday if, if everybody is available. I don't know, Tom, Tom, if you're available on Monday, and Jane, I, I'd love to meet again, and Mike?
Thank you, Councilor Bragg, and just not at 5:00, because I have a committee meeting then too, and I think all three of those are going to be there for that. And we'll keep it short, because it's obviously an important day for some people. Any other chair committee reports?
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Mr. Manager?
I really just wanted to point out to Council Bragg that I think there are three committee meetings that, uh, on Monday, age-friendly charter review and, um, sustainability.
Perfect. Let's, let's shoot for Wednesday then.
Sure.
You can make all three, Peter, or four.
Sure.
So for sustainability, as was just said, uh, 5:00 PM Monday. Uh, thank you all for being willing to attend. Uh, I had put out the doodle for the upcoming week for economic development. Uh, it's a busy week for a lot of people, so I'm going to reschedule that probably to the following week. Sustainability meeting will be in person and Zoom. We'll be holding it in the airport building. Uh, there's an office in there that we'll be using. So yes, Jeff, your hand is up, probably pertaining to that.
Yeah, um, we may have to reconsider the venue if I don't have water. We won't have bathrooms or anything like that.
Okay, good point.
But I'll I'll keep you posted on that.
Thank you. I, I know that the library, I think, reopened recently, so I'll reach out to them. I originally scheduled it, uh, over there at the airport, uh, for obvious reasons. We've been working on that. But also because I think the library had been closed for some time. Um, so I'll send an update for that. Any other chair committee reports? All right, seeing none, uh, moving into two-minute public comment. If any public member would like to address the council? Ben Barr?
Ben Barr, 127 Elm Street. Would just like to let everybody know that the 7th Annual Robert Burns Night is going to be, is scheduled for the 25th of February. That's Friday night, 6 o'clock at the Millinocket Elks Lodge on Roostick Avenue. I have Mark Miller, Rick McGibben going to play, and then Bernie Stockley on the bagpipes. Donations will be accepted, and the proceeds will benefit the Friends of the Millinocket Memorial Library.
Thank you, Ben. Any other public comment? Chief Malcolm?
Uh, I'd just like to touch on the, uh, Tom Malcolm, 73 School Street. I'd just like to touch on the snow plowing issue. That, that's not a new issue. We've been battling that for two or three years. This year has been horrendous. They're burying fire hydrants, they're burying anything they can, the neighbors' yards. The manager and I went out the other day and looked at an intersection. There wasn't much we could do because the public works had already been there and cleaned it up. But that is a real issue that we need to address. Um, that's a, a very large safety concern in this community. Especially when they, when they're plowing over the hydrants and, you know, I, I agree with, uh, Councilor Danforth that, you know, we, we need to talk to people, but sometimes, uh, the talking isn't working, so we do need to do something a little more drastic. Thank you. That's my opinion.
Thank you, Chief Malcolm, for that perspective. Any other public comment? And, uh, seeing none, I will seek a motion to adjourn.
So moved. So moved. Second.
Motion by Councilor Mador, second by Councilor Bragg. And all those in favor, Councilor Prey?
Aye.
Councilor Danforth?
Aye.
Councilor McEwen?
Aye.
Chair Golub, aye. Councilor Mador?
Aye.
Councilor Bragg?
Aye.
Councilor Pelletier?
Aye.
We're now adjourned. Enjoy the rest of your evening, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you. Take care, everyone.
Everybody be safe.